Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kazer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Chair McCoyd.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Okay, we have no approvals. You don't have... Oh, thank you again. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have no addition or deletions to the agenda? Do we have any public comment? No, we don't. Is there anybody here who would wish to address the housing authority? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to the consent calendar. Member Lewis.
Yes, I move acceptance of the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the July 23rd, 2018 meeting.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Hoy, that we approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Information reports. We have no action items, resolutions, or public hearings, or special orders of business. We do have an information report with a program management report on it. Andy, anything you want to point out there, or anything you want to discuss with us?
Not of note, no, thank you.
Not of note?
Not of note.
Okay. We have a question from Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. It's more a comment, and I've said this before, but I really appreciate these reports, Andy, and I like the style in which they tell the story of individual people, and that personalizes this much more than just saying, "We have X number of units, and X number of vouchers, and Y number of people served." So, thank you a lot for doing that, and I thank your staff for me, too.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem is adjourned.
Call this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Kazer.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Gito.
Board Member Nanki.
Hero.
Board Member McCoyd.
Here.
Board Member Osick.
Present.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don't.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up? Yeah. Okay. No one's signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who wanted to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Okay. Consent calendar.
I move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on the consent calendar tonight, we have the minutes of the August 13th Urban Renewal Agency minutes. Under action items, we have 4.3A, which authorizes the executive director to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Union Gospel Mission of Salem, Oregon for the acquisition of real property. Under 4.3B, we authorize a temporary use of $435,000 of North Gateway Urban Renewal Area funds to increase funding authority for the purchase of properties located at 4075 and 4107 Fisher Road Northeast. Under 4.3C, we authorize the executive director to execute a lease with Capital Auto Group for property located at 2640 Portland Road Northeast, and that was to be used to park cars there. And that is the consent calendar.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. I had asked for item 4.3A to be polled.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Should I amend my motion? Nope, okay.
We'll just take this up in a minute. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports. There you are. Kristen, go ahead.
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. The only information report we have this evening is an item brought forward by our city attorney's office to make the order of business for the urban renewal meetings the same as the order of business for city council meetings.
And this'll...
So pursuant to the URA rules, it has to be presented to the commission first, and it'll come back at a later date at the next meeting for your consideration and potential adoption.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, special orders of business, 4.3A. Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Hoy.
Thanks. I had wanted to poll this purchase and sale agreement with Union Gospel Mission because it's gotten some public attention. It's had two articles in the Savin Journal written, I think, this morning. So I think it would be good if we just had kind of a brief explanation of what's happening, just so it's really clear to the public what's going on as well.
Absolutely, and I'm going to have Clint Dameron, who's our real estate services manager, walk everybody through that, as he's been the most involved in the negotiations.
Good evening. Clint Dameron, Urban Development Department. The PSA is fairly self-explanatory, but as if you've read it, and most people know, that did used to be a former gas station many years ago. The property underwent substantial environmental remediation in the mid-'90s, and then again, UGM on their own, the last three, four years, has performed several environmental studies and done a little bit of remediation as well. So, the appraised value is $1,655,000. We have negotiated an $80,000 offset for potential unknown environmental remediation. The only unknown at this date is a small hit very far down at the corner near Center and Commercial, where the gas station pump, uh, tanks used to be. That plume is, the hit, the monitoring well is right there. The contamination is flowing off-site to the northwest. So, this was the best estimate we could come up with at this point to help offset any future stuff, any cost. We won't know until we actually start digging on the site.
Any discussion then?
I just wanted to say thanks for explaining that, and also for your negotiations with UGM, and kind of working through this process so the city could acquire the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have no public hearings. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order. The clerk would, or the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kazer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Present.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. Additions or deletions?
It's Mr. Mayor. I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Kazer.
And that consists of a revision on 4.8. There's a report added to what was previously distributed, and 4.8, which is the public hearing on property located at 4195 Omso Highway, at the request of the appellant, and the applicant and the appellant is going to be continued till 9/24.
So there will be no public comment during the public hearing?
There'll be no public hearing tonight, right? Or whatever.
Right, we'll go ahead and open the hearing, and then council can consider a motion to continue the hearing to September 24th, and take testimony at that time.
Mainly to alert people who are here to testify on that item, they won't be testifying tonight. Okay. Very good. Did you have something? No? Okay, sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Counselor and manager comment. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you publicly for giving me the opportunity to attend the 46th anniversary celebration yesterday of the Pauline Memorial AME Zion Church out in Ward 6. It was a wonderful celebration. I really enjoyed myself, spent all afternoon out there, and delivered your proclamation, and I just appreciate that, and I know the folks there did as well, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It was my 40th wedding anniversary, so I was really unable to... Now, I could've gone, but there'd been no 41st, yeah. So, thank you very much, Counselor Hoy. Counselor McCoyd?
Following light, I had the opportunity, as the mayor was double-booked, to represent the city and the mayor at the Willamette Valley Hospice's Twilight on the River event, which celebrated their 40th year of existence. They're founded in 1978. They're the only nonprofit hospice in the state of Oregon. It's a large, I was surprised at how large an operation is, and I went and met with their CEO. It's a big building with a lot of people working there. They have a variety of programs that maybe other competing hospices don't, and in, sort of, as part of the program, they have, over the 40 years, assisted 24,000 people as they've passed on. And so what they did was, you know, the luminaria, the lights in the bag, they put 24,000 luminaria up, representing those 24,000 lives, all through Riverfront Park, all the way to the end, over the bridge, and once the, once it got sort of died, the sun went down, it was really a gorgeous sight. And they ran a wonderful ceremony where folks got up and spoke, and it was extra special for me, because my mother passed away five years ago, and she used their services, so I got to tell a little story about my mom, and, which is a good thing. And it was a very cathartic, powerful event.
Great, thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two motions on the agenda item today that, deservedly so, have a lot of members of the public out here. One of them is the motion to, for the council to oppose ballot measure 105, and we're not having a public hearing on that, but we want, we want people who are here to be able to express their opinions, but, and I've said this in various social media, too, it would be best in terms of the process that we have a limited number of people actually speak, and I will hope one of those speakers would say, "All those people who are here supporting the resolution to oppose ballot measure 105, stand up, so we can have an idea of who's here." So, I want to say I appreciate everybody coming, and I look forward to the vote to oppose the ballot measure. The second item that is on the agenda is the first reading of the, in, plastic bag ban that I introduced a couple months ago, and there, again, there is not a public hearing on this tonight, but there will be a public hearing on September 7th, excuse me, September 10th, at the next council meeting, and that will be an opportunity for everyone here and everyone in the community to come out and express their views on the proposed ordinance banning the bags. So I would ask again that tonight, it would probably be best, since you will have a chance to testify at the next council meeting, that again, we have hopefully a limited number of people from different groups, and I would say that's the same on the ballot measure 105 issue. We'd like to see all groups represented, but it would probably be best if one of the speakers would ask everybody who's here in support of the plastic bag ban to stand up, too. I want to say I really appreciate the civic involvement of everyone here, and right now I'm looking at the people across from me, and thank you very much for coming here, and we look forward to discussing and voting on this motion opposed to the ballot measure 105. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. We do have a number of folks signed up. You'll be able to speak under public comment if you want to get up and speak on any of the items on the council agenda tonight, so feel free. Anyone else? Nope, okay. Alrighty, we'll move on then to proclamations. I want to invite up Chris Simpson, the executive director of the Recovery Outreach Community And then I also want to acknowledge a present from the Hands Across the Bridge Planning Committee. Come on up here, Chris. Come on up here. Jennifer Pangburn, Michelle Miller, Victoria Kelly, Cecilia Fiorillo, Laura Karanza Cam. If you all want to come up, that'd be great. Great. I'll just give you some, there's apparently all that. Yeah, everybody gets one. Yes, okay. Whereas the impact of mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities, and whereas behavioral health is essential to overall health and recovery, is a process through which individuals are able to improve their wellness, live increasingly self-directed lives, and strive to fulfill their greatest potential, and whereas by seeking support, people who experience mental health or substance use disorders can embark on a healthier lifestyle, whereas National Recovery Month promotes the societal benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery for mental health and substance use disorders, celebrates people in recovery, recognizes contributions of treatment and service providers, and promotes the message that recovery in all its forms is possible. Whereas the 12th Annual Hands Across the Bridge Event is scheduled for Friday, September 7th, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Marion Square Park, and is a community celebration of recovery and remember, remembrance for those lost to addictions and mental health challenges. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as National Recovery Month, and invite the residents of Salem to join me in observing this month with compelling programs and events that supports this year's observance, dated this 27th day of August 2018. So, thank you. (applause) You want to share? No? Okay. You want to share?
Hi, I'm, sorry, I was not prepared to speak, but I just wanted to share that about 26 years ago, I experienced a very traumatic, life-altering experience of a mental health challenge. The journey has been really difficult. I was kind of struggling to be a parent with a mental health challenge that was at times severe, but with hope and with support from people in the community as well as peers. I can say today that I'm, I'm learning to manage my challenges, and that my work at the Oregon State Hospital has been very profound and healing to me, as I see that I could have been one of the people that resides there if it wasn't for very fortunate life circumstances at a particular time in my life history. So, I want to thank these folks here. I want to thank Chris for letting me be a part of their endeavors and promotions of mental health and recovery health.
I just want to take the time. Hello, my name's Victoria.[1194.58][1194.58](applause) And I just want to take the time to invite each and every one of you out to our Hands Across the Bridge event, September 7th, down at Marion Square Park. It's a wonderful activity and event. We've got games and prizes, family-friendly. Recovery and mental health can be used in the same sentence, and we would like to make sure that everybody is aware of that. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you very much.[1221.13][1221.13](applause) This is the point at which we do public comment. I want to remind you that each person is allowed three minutes. At two minutes, the orange light goes on, so you have one minute left to speak. At three minutes, the red light goes on, if you would please just stop speaking, and then I don't have to ask you to, and that's always more polite, if you do it yourself. So, we'll go ahead. Joyce Judy, then Paul Crissell.
So my name is Shellaswa Crier. I am a resident of Ward 2. As per my city councilor's suggestion, I am here to speak against measure 105, and so I would ask that all who are here to speak against measure 105, please stand. Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. I'm here tonight to urge the Salem City Council to take a strong stance in opposition to ballot measure 105. As you're all already aware, ballot measure 105 seeks to overturn Oregon's 31-year-old sanctuary law, a law that has protected public safety, protected people from racial profiling. This ballot measure has been marked, has been supported and pushed and promoted by a group that the Southern Poverty Law Center has labeled as a hate group. We are here in the city of Salem, a city that is named after peace. That is not the spirit of our city, and it should not be the spirit of our state. This law, like I said, threatens to bring back racial profiling in force. As a woman of color, particularly as the mother of black boys, I know what racial profiling feels like. I know what it feels like for someone to call 911 on my son because he looked suspicious while standing at the bus stop to go to school, to be pulled over by cops while walking to school in the morning. And I don't want that for anyone in our community, and I believe that no one in this room wants that either. In addition to it being a harm for our public safety, it's also fiscally irresponsible. The feds should spend their money enforcing their laws. The state of Oregon, on our state, local, county, city levels, we are to not have unlimited cash, and we need to use that money supporting our communities. So I urge you to speak up strongly, to take the stance against ballot measure 105. You are our elected leaders. Let the state know that the city of Salem will stand in opposition to any law on any level that threatens our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.[1457.51][1457.51](applause) Joyce Judy, Joyce. Then Paul, you're up after Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Joyce Judy, and I live in Ward 2. It would appear that the city council omitted a very important measure that will be on the ballot in November 2018. That measure is measure 106, which would prohibit public funds from being spent on abortion. I would like to ask that the city council amend their city positions to add a no vote on measure 106. If the council can't unanimously agree to this, then a vote should publicly be taken, so that the people of Salem know where each of their councilors stand on this important issue. A huge effort is being put forth to defeat measure 105, and rightfully so. It would eliminate Oregon's 31-year sanctuary state status, but I fear that other measures will win due to a lack of similar effort on the part of constituents. In particular, this city council has worked very hard to help with solutions to homelessness. Thus, a greater effort should be put forward on measure 102, which would allow cities and counties to use bonds to fund privately-owned affordable housing. Measure 104 would make it virtually impossible for our legislature to raise revenues, which would drastically affect Salem. The council needs to put forth greater effort to defeat this measure as well. I believe it isn't enough for the council to simply say that they are against certain measures, they must also act to help defeat them. Oh, and yes, I'm in favor of the plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Paul Crissell? I'm going to ask you not to applaud. We want to get through this this evening, and it's going to take it out of the last person's time, so Paul, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Paul Crissell. I serve as co-chair of the Racial Justice Organizing Committee. We work in strategic alliance with organizations representing people of color in this community to fight racism and its impact in our community. Salem, shalom, salam, these are names for the city of peace. We call ourselves a city of peace. We aspire to be a welcoming city. You passed an inclusivity resolution a couple of months, or a couple of years ago, to make that statement part of public policy. A month or so ago, you passed a resolution opposing the ripping families apart at our border. This is totally consistent with all of those precedents for Salem City Council to vote to oppose measure 105, which would rip families apart and cause fear in our community. Frankly, my tax dollars, my Salem tax dollars, need to go to fighting local crime. I don't need to have Jerry and his guys and his women on his police force chasing after being assistant immigration agents. They need to be working in our community. I pay enough federal taxes for the feds to take care of that, and I don't like the way they're doing that. We don't need to repeat that here. Let's be the city of peace. Let's oppose measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patricia Pollard, you're following. Mr. Pollard?
Mayor Bennett, the city council members. I'm Michael Pollard, 5176 Coltsco, Southeast Ward 4. I'm here to speak to the resolution that asks the city council to endorse a no vote on ballot measure 105. I believe that this measure is not only a bad idea, it is a racist idea, with intention of ethnic cleansing and intimidation of non-white community members of the state of Oregon. It is a bad idea because it was, it has very serious intended consequences, two of which are the return of racial profiling, and silencing community members when crimes are committed for fear, they would be very fearful of reporting crimes. I have already been the target of such racist attitudes, and I am aware of others being intimidated by white supremacists challenging their rights to be here in Oregon. Mayor Bennett and city council members, I know what it's like to be the target, to be singled out and not treated with dignity. It happened last year. It leaves you feeling very angry. It leaves you feeling demeaned. It makes you feel marginalized. Let's not make Oregon become a "show me your papers" law. If a police officer pulls over a white person to say hello, they don't and will not ask, "Prove to me you are a citizen or a legal resident of state of Oregon." They should not do that to anyone.
Thank you. Patricia Pollard, followed by Jose Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, council members. I am Patrice Pollard. I live in Ward 4. I am here tonight to show support of the resolution in opposition to ballot measure 105. This bill was introduced by an anti-immigrant white supremacy group classified... This bill was introduced by an anti-immigrant white supremacy group classified as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Immigrants are our friends, our neighbors, the people we work with, the people we go to school with. They are the classmates of our children and grandchildren. They're the people we marry, the people we love. There is not a good reason for this ballot measure. The federal government has all the resources it needs to enforce the law. Our local law enforcement agencies do not need to add their limited resources and funds to this effort. If this measure passes, racial profiling will become the norm once again, as it was before 1987, when common sense prevailed. Oregon then became a sanctuary state. If this measure passes, anyone who is perceived to be an immigrant, most likely non-white citizens and non-citizens, both documented and undocumented, will be harassed, singled out, and may be subject to deportation. Our communities will be less safe. When people live in fear, they are less likely to report crimes, less likely to work with local law enforcement agencies. People will be less likely to engage in any community activity. Local businesses may fail to thrive. The resulting fear and trauma to our young children, our immigrant friends, our immigrant neighbors, our immigrant communities is unacceptable. It is inhumane. As a city, we must support this resolution against this racist, cruel, and unjust ballot measure. We need to be supportive of our immigrant friends, our immigrant neighbors. We must resolve to keep Oregon a sanctuary state that keeps families together and safe.
Thank you very much. Jose Gonzalez, followed by Audrey Von Molesky.
Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Jose Gonzalez. I've been probably doing business here in Salem over 20 years. I'm president of Tucasa Real Estate, and a lot of the many boards and commissions I've served on, one is the City Budget Committee. Fun times.
Dream come true, isn't it?
Yeah. And I'm here to show support for the opposing of Measure 105. And I would say one of the main reasons is because of the, I can't imagine what life would be like here if that were to pass. But I'm lucky enough to be able to come here and share with you how life was before this policy was active. You know, so when I was about seven or eight years old, I called my mom to confirm, and the cops pulled us over on 99E outside of Woodburn. And I'll never forget the first thing he asked us. He said, "Where are you guys from?" Now, what he didn't know is we were prepared. We knew what to say, we knew how to say it. And we did that, we knew that because our parents had prepared us. Our parents had gone through those checkpoints on 99E, been pulled over for no reason other than the way they looked. They told us to speak proper English. So, I look at it now, but it was out of safety that I learned this language. So, I can't imagine what would happen if this were to happen again. Outside of Woodburn, many, many times did we see these situations happen, and that did lead to everything, everybody saying today. A lot of distrust, a lot of, I would say, loss in the American dream. But I would say that policy that was enacted was probably one of the small but very key policies that helped our families succeed and helped in our pursuit of the American dream. And I just want, I'm just here today to make sure that the other families are given the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Se. Audrey will be followed by Gary Walmart. Both sides work, by the way, both at the podium, and then Sean Miller. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Audrey Von Molesky. I live in Ward 5, and I'm here today speaking to oppose Measure 105. My colleagues over there and I are educators at Adam Stevens Middle School in northeast Salem, and we're all here to strongly urge our community to vote no on Measure 105. This measure will repeal Oregon's 30-year sanctuary law and increase racial profiling in our state, and that is not the future we want for Oregon. As educators, we are opposed to Measure 105 because it will harm our students, their families, and our community. Measure 105 is an out-of-touch attempt by anti-immigrant extremist groups to influence our elections here in Oregon. These groups don't understand the reality of our lives here in Salem. They don't understand our sense of community and care for all of our neighbors. Measure 105 is a step backwards for Oregon, reminiscent of our days as a whites-only state with sundown towns and lash laws. It is a blatant attempt to lay the blame for the challenges we face as a state at the feet of undocumented immigrants. If passed, this measure will cause increased racial profiling of people perceived to be undocumented, both by law enforcement and by their fellow citizens. This will disproportionately affect the students we teach and their families, most of whom are students and people of color. Local families don't need more obstacles to living a peaceful life. They don't need more barriers to equitable public education. In Salem and at Stevens, many of our families, whether white, black, brown, Islander, Asian, American Indian, we struggle with poverty, food insecurity, homelessness, the effects of drugs, and more. Our local families are not being harmed by their undocumented neighbors just trying to live their lives. Repealing the sanctuary law will not improve local families' quality of life or the futures of their children. All it will do is create fear and more division in our state. We already know as teachers that students who are afraid have poor attendance, they have poor performance in school, and their families, who might also be afraid, don't come to their conferences, they don't attend teacher meetings, they don't respond to our outreach efforts. Another thing to consider is that law enforcement does occupy a special position in our schools right now. They work in the communities and in our buildings, and they have the stated goal of building relationships and keeping people safe. Forcing officers to execute the agenda of an out-of-state hate group will undermine the work that they do with our students, and it's going to permanently damage our community. Please join us in opposing Measure 105. This measure is an obvious and insulting attempt to divide Oregonians on the basis of immigration status, when really, we should be rallying together, rich and poor, families of all racial backgrounds, to demand better for all of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Cook had a question.
Hi. Thank you. You mentioned you were a teacher at Stevens, is that right?
That's correct.
Would you ask all of the teachers or educators in the audience that would like to stand with you, would you afford them that opportunity?
Absolutely. Teachers and anybody else who works in the schools, because there's a lot of us.
Excellent. Thank you. Gary Walmart, followed by Sean Miller.
I'm Gary Walmart from Ward 3. I'm a member of 350 Salem. 350.org is an international grassroots climate change organization, and I'm here today to talk about plastic bags. Now, 30 years ago, plastic bags were introduced in our society, and they really had many advantages, people thought at the time, over paper bags. Quickly, they became the bag that most of the stores were using. They're inexpensive, they're modern-looking, they're easy to carry because they have a nice little strap on them. All kinds of reasons why people would want to use these bags if they didn't really think about the consequences of having these kinds of plastic bags. However, they became too popular. They became an addiction for us, and like many addictions, it has problems. The problem with plastic bags, the number-one problem, is they last too long. Scientists tell us that they last between 500 and 1,000 years, and yet, on average, they only have 12 minutes of use. 12 minutes of use for something that's going to last this 500 to 1,000 years. So, how many plastic bags do we produce in the United States and use every year? Well, that number is close to 100 billion, 100 billion plastic bags. Now, if you take that and you compute that with the population of the United States, that means that roughly every American ends up using one plastic bag a day. That's the nature of the addiction, one plastic bag a day. So, what's the effect of this bag habit that we have, this plastic bag habit? Well, of course, we have unsightly litter, we have landfill obesity, we have waterway and ocean pollution, but that's not the only problem we have, because even before this bag shows up to be used, it's causing us problems. The problem that it's causing us is that it's contributing to greenhouse gases in our atmosphere, which contribute to the heat that we have that's building in our atmosphere. Now, right now, I want to do more things to have fewer hot-smoky days, not have more of these hot-smoky days. Over 120 U.S. states, cities, and municipalities have taxed or banned these plastic bags. Retailers are also moving in that direction. Retailers such as Kroger, which last week announced that it's moving to get rid of these plastic bags. Why? Their consumers want to get rid of them, and that's exactly why we should too. The state of Oregon has a number of cities that have already put limitations on these bags. Portland has, Eugene, Corvallis, McMenville, Hood River, Manzanita, Ashland. There's several other cities that have plastic bag bans already pending. In fact, I looked on the internet this morning, and Astoria now has said that they want it, they're proposing a plastic bag ban also. It's not that Salem will be at the beginning of the parade, but we should be near the front when we make this move on this. So, I have a question, as posed by Mr. Anderson. The question I have is whether we should be using these plastic bags or whether we should be using bags like this. And I ask those members of the public that want to use a reusable bag, please stand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walmart. Your time's up.
It's time to kick the habit.
Councillor Cook, you had a question?
The bag-a-day habit.
Yeah. Councillor Cook had a question for you.
Thank you. Mr. Walmart, I have a couple of questions for you. So, thank you for sharing about the plastic bags and their impact on the environment. I was surprised to hear you didn't mention the making of plastic bags and the role that that plays as far as use of fossil fuels.
Absolutely. The making of plastic bags, most of them are made out of both fossil fuels that are oil-based, but also natural gas. And most of the natural gas that is, that's used to make these plastic bags is fracked natural gas. So, it has a number of different consequences, both on the environment above us, but also the environment below us in terms of impact upon our water sources.
And I definitely, with the alcohol bloom and the highlighting of our water quality as well, I think it's really interesting to look at what we're taking and putting in, how our role is in this impact, in this biome, in this bio-region. My question is, are plastic bags alone enough to solve this issue? If we were to ban them, we wouldn't have to worry about anything else, or is this more comprehensive than just plastic bags?
Oh, it must be much more comprehensive than plastic bags, but we have to take every step that we can. Because if we only take a few steps, we're not going to get to our goals. If we really want to protect our society, our future, our kids' future, our grandchildren's future, we have to take all the steps necessary because it's a massive cumulative problem. It didn't, this wasn't a problem that was just caused by plastic bags. I wish it was that simple. It's a massive problem with lots of causes, but we also have to look at all the different solutions.
So, I guess I agree, looking at all possible solutions, it's really important that maybe it would be something we can include on policy agendas for the future, if that were to be something we could actually dedicate some staff time to, to comprehensively look at what are our sources of waste, what is our process for waste removal. You know, there's reduce, reuse, recycle, and probably, they're all important, but the reduce factor is definitely a multiplier when it comes to this. So, are you opposed to it being on the policy agenda as a possible action item in the future?
I think it should be, because the less stuff that we put in these bags, or even this kind of bag, the less pollution we're going to be having, the less litter we're going to be having, the less waste is going to be going to the landfills, the less waste is going to be going into our rivers and into our oceans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Miller, followed by Alonso Oliveros.
Mayor Bennett, members of the Salem City Council, my name's Sean Miller. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Northwest Grocery Association. We represent about 14 of your local grocery stores here in the city of Salem, and here to support the efforts of the city to create a sustainable shopping policy. Worked in a lot of these bag policies, sustainable bag policies around the state, and what I've seen before, before you all, is a good model for the state. And I want to just talk about just some key components of why our industry, and you heard from the prior speaker, wants to move and change behavior to moving towards that reusable bag. As you know, we do have what we call the T-shirt bag, which is that small, very thin plastic bag in our stores, and we also have recycled paper bags in our stores. And if you, as this policy contemplates, you ban the plastic bag, and a key component to this is the five-cent pass-through fee. It's a very important component because that five cents, which doesn't even cover our cost for the recycled paper bag, but it does change behavior to get people to think about bringing back their reusable bag. Without it, they, all you're doing is doing one single-use bag, changing one single-use bag for another single-use bag. And so, that five cents is a gentle reminder. It's a reminder to bring in your reusable bag and to move to that. And so, this particular policy, and it's a policy that, again, we have worked with the environmental community, we do view this as an environmental win, a win for our stores and a win for our consumers, because this does not raise grocery prices when you move to this policy. The five-cent pass-through fee is, it's not a tax or a fee, it's actually avoidable. All you have to do is use your reusable bag. And so, that gentle reminder is why the cities that have enacted this particular proposal, it works, and it works successful. And so, we're here, again, happy to be a resource, work with the City Council as you bring this back. This is a good step for the city of Salem, want to lend our support and our help. But again, the components in this is why we feel we can work with the environmental community, and we can all get this victory. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions? Okay. Alonso?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Alonso Oliveros, here in Salem with the Oregonians United Against Profiling Campaign. I urge the city of Salem to vote no against Measure 105, a proposed ballot measure that does so many things wrong in viewing immigrants as scapegoats by racist hate groups and white supremists, and will lead to more unfair racial profiling. Measure 105 is about pushing a wrongly biased narrative that our existing law, ORS 181A.820, somehow provides protection and refuge from accountability and justice solely because of immigration status. That is not the intention of the law, and that is not how this law has been working for the last 31 years. In fact, because of this law, local law enforcement enjoys the trust and cooperation of the immigrant community to help solve crimes, report criminal activity, testify in courts, and feel safe to denounce those persons, citizens and immigrants alike, whom have caused them pain and suffering, so that those criminal activities and the vicious cycle of trauma and brutality can be stopped. For more than a decade, local law enforcement officials have argued against assisting federal immigration enforcement agencies, which can drive a wedge between local law enforcement and the communities they serve. When local law enforcement focuses on keeping communities safe rather than becoming entangled in federal immigration enforcement efforts, communities are safer and community members stay more engaged in the local economy. This in turn brings benefits to individual households, communities, counties, and the economy as a whole. I urge you to vote no on Measure 105 so that Salem can continue to be a trend center for being inclusive to all and a community where all people, regardless of their immigration status, are welcomed and treated with fairness. The Salem World Beat Festival just celebrated its 21st annual music festival celebrating diversity. Let's continue to let everyone know that when Salem dances to its own rhythm, it beats to its own drum circle for equality for all, as we've been doing for the last 31 years. Thank you.
Alonso, I want to thank you for describing really accurately what our law is. I really appreciate that. I think getting beyond the words like sanctuary and describing exactly what's going on here, I really appreciate what you had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Tom Lansfield?
Good evening, City Council members and mayor. I'm from Ward 3, 313 Ewald Avenue, Southeast. I'm for reusable bags for shopping. I use mine about two-thirds of the time. I'm not in favor of a ban. I'll save my explanation for my position for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zoe? Boy, there you are. I'm going to say this wrong if I try. I apologize. And then Lori Doherty, you're next, followed by Sarah Wors.
I'll give you a chance to try.
Well, I can't make out one of the letters. I could make a run at it. Diaku?
Zoe Diaku.
Diaku. Excellent. Better than I thought.
Pretty phonetic. Yes, and I am a resident of Ward 2, and live and also work here in Salem, and I am officially representing the Salem Kaiser Education Association and our ASK ESP, both of which are the professional unions representing our teachers, our nurses, our custodians, our bus drivers, our secretaries in our school district. And the boards of both of those organizations have taken an official stance supporting no on Measure 105. And in fact, I'm going to stop just for a moment, and we've already- And in fact, I'm going to stop just for a moment, and we've already seen people who support in general, we've seen other educators here. I'd like to see how many students and family members who have students and who are opposed to 105 to please stand. If our students or staff are afraid that one of their family members won't be there when they get home, or that ICE will demand that our school resource officers be forced to work with them, we as educators will not be able to stay focused on the task of educating. It's imperative that we not participate in fear mongering and refer to our immigrant neighbors as possible gang members or terrorists. It's equally important, in an era of tight budgets, that our local law enforcement be allowed to collaborate with our community, to increase a true feeling of safety in reporting domestic abuse and other crimes, and to decrease racial profiling. Thank you, and again, we hope that the city of Salem continues to support our students and educators and our families.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Lori? Sarah, you're behind, Lori.
Mayor Bennett and city councillors, my name is Lori Doherty. I live in Ward 2. I'm a member of the racial justice organizing committee and also of 350 Salem, Oregon Climate Action Organization. Of course, I stand with Gary with 350 and wanting us to implement the plastic bag ban, but I'm here to speak for 350 against Measure 105. The backers of Measure 105, as people have said, it is basically a hate group. Close analysis of its funding sources and its affiliations of its members and officers goes straight back to anti-immigrant and white supremacist groups, yet they claim to be an environmental group. It's a cruel and deceptive argument that they are making. The real environmental organizations like our 350 Climate Action chapters in Oregon, like Oregon Youth Conservation Voters, like the Sierra Cup, we are united in opposition to Measure 105. We believe that everyone, everyone in the state deserves a healthy climate and the ability to live in safety and without fear. Don't buy that argument. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, and then Trevor Phillips.
Hi, I'm in Ward 2. That's your ward, right? And I'm here to speak, I'm sorry, I forgot the number, but I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution to oppose 105. And I, rather than speak at length, I'll just endorse what everyone else has said. And I'm also in favor of the plastic ban, plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Trevor Phillips, followed by Teri Weber.
My name is Trevor Phillips. I live in Ward 3. I'm a licensed physician, board certified in emergency medicine. I work at Salem Hospital. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, members of the city council and city staff for giving us the opportunity to speak as our schedules allow. Specifically, I want to speak about my opposition and my request to have you all oppose Measure 105. So let's begin. Let's acknowledge that this summer will be remembered as the year that the United States immorally and illegally separated the families of asylum seekers and put kids in cages. Over 500 of these illegally separated children have yet to be reunified with their families. As a clinician, I find it difficult to comprehend the unimaginable trauma caused by racial profiling and these family separations. This is the backdrop of the upcoming vote on this issue. A year and a half ago, the Salem City Council voted to unanimously support the inclusivity city resolution, which I and over 40 other community members testified in favor of. Let's be clear, there is nothing inclusive about Measure 105. Measure 105 was funded by extremist hate groups. Our historic, and for lack of better expression, state sanctuary law has successfully protected Oregonians against racial profiling for 31 years. As Oregonians, we must unite with the hundreds of businesses, organizations, and law force members who have spoken out against Measure 105. Factually speaking, I'm not the first to say tonight, our current anti-racial profiling law makes our community safer. People are more comfortable calling and working with the police when they need to, and economies are more prosperous when they have laws like Oregonians. Voting no on Measure 105 will ensure that Oregonians keep this essential anti-racial profiling law. Salem must act to join this coalition and protect our community from racial profiling. Imagine the upcoming headlines. I would like it to reflect that Salem truly is a community that celebrates inclusivity and that we are united with all Oregonians against racial profiling. And then to end my schedule, I don't think I'll be able to come back for the bag, so I would like to state that I emphatically support the ordinance limiting one-time-use plastic bags. We must work together to mitigate climate disruption in every conceivable way possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Teri Weber. And then Kathleen West.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Teri Weber. I'm the executive director for packaging for the American Forest and Paper Association. I represent the manufacturers and converters of craft paper bags. I'm here tonight to offer some thoughts as you begin work on the bag ordinance. The primary issue of concern for us is how the ordinance treats paper bags. Our preference is that the council follow the example set by the city of Portland and avoid mandating the fee on paper bags. Mandating fees are regressive, and they imply that our products are part of the problem rather than the solution. In fact, paper bags are the only grocery bag accepted for recycling at the curb in Salem. Every other bag, reusable or otherwise, will end its life in a landfill. We understand concerns expressed by some retailers, but I would encourage you to be skeptical of some of the things they're saying about the price of bags. When you actually look at bags of equivalent capacity, the pricing difference closes by quite a bit. The average handle bag you get at a grocery store has three times the capacity of a typical T-shirt plastic bag. Avoiding the charge actually offers more flexibility for retailers. Retailers today are completely free to charge for bags if they already choose to do so. In Portland, rather than charging for bags, many retailers, many of the large grocery chains, offer 10-cent rebates for consumers who bring their own bags as an alternative path. And many retailers, including most recently Fred Meyer's parent company Kroger, are already voluntarily transitioning to paper bags. In 2017, 65.8% of paper consumed in the U.S. was recovered for recycling. In Oregon, paper bags are not only a sustainable choice, but they support a local industry. Unbleached craft paper is produced at mills less than 100 miles from Salem, and the paper is used to make bags at a facility in Beaverton. Brown papers that are used to make bags and boxes are among the highest value recovered paper. Recovered bags are used as valuable feedstock in mills in both Oregon and Washington. We plan to submit further comments for the hearings on this issue, and we look forward to continuing the dialogue.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Weber, and I hope you do show up at the hearing, the public hearing. You talked earlier about this being a sort of a regressive tax. I wonder if you are aware that the proposed ordinance allows folks who are on, have vouchers under the Women, Infants, and Children Program and the EBT, or Oregon Trail Card, to not have to pay the five cents. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, absolutely. Even if you omit that, once you get past that threshold, it's regressive above that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Kathleen West. Kathleen's followed by Emily Lowberg, then Charlie Plylon, and then I'll tell the last person who's up. Okay, Kathleen's not here?
No, I'm here, but I just signed with you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'd have waited for you.
She's from Ward 2, though.
You are from, yeah, you are from Ward 2. Okay, Emily Lowberg, followed by Charlie Plybon.
Hi, my name's Emily Lowberg. I'm a resident of Ward 1, and I am here to ask the Salem City Council to take position against Measure 105. I believe that the way a community treats anyone in that community is reflective of its values and character and the experience of being in that community, and I want to be part of a community that values compassion and that treats anyone in that community with generosity and welcomes those who may be in need. And I believe that opposing Measure 105 is essential to remaining that kind of community and having that kind of integrity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Plybon, and you'll be followed by Jocelyn Enavaldson.
Wonderful.
There you are.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. For the record, my name is Charlie Plybon. I am the Oregon Policy Manager for Surf Rider Foundation, and I stumbled in here from the coast this evening. Actually, I drove here from the coast this evening. And I realize this isn't the hearing for the plastic bag, but I do want to give my comments and invite you guys to interact with us as a resource. I think we've had some correspondence on the policy as it's been developed so far. First and foremost, we applaud the city for your efforts. This is something that the Surf Rider Foundation, our chapters, have worked on throughout the state of Oregon. We've worked on seven of the nine policies that exist now. I've had the pleasure of working with Sean Miller and the Northwest Grocery Association and finding a policy that both the business association and the businesses and the environmental community can live with. In fact, we took that to the state legislature back in 2015, 12, I believe, somewhere in that zone. It's been a little while. This particular policy is really important to us, and what's really important is that we get it right. We've had to go back and we've had to do over other policies. There's also policies that we aren't satisfied with. In fact, the one that we originally passed in Portland is not a policy that we're finished with. In fact, I'm on a mayor's committee right now to reduce single-use plastics in the city of Portland. This is addressing many other issues because the policy in Portland right now is not comprehensive enough. That fee is absolutely critical in shifting behaviors. We've seen this time and time and time again with the bottle bill, with fees that they placed in Washington, D.C. on policies, and policies that have been implemented in Ireland and other places. There's tons of great case studies about the necessity of fees like this. They're not taxes. In fact, we addressed that during the legislative session. We actually had legal counsel look into this. What is a tax? What isn't a tax? This is a fee. It's completely avoidable and absolutely necessary. I want to remind you that the policy is not to shift everybody from a plastic bag to a paper bag. That would be terrible for the environment. Despite everything beautiful and wonderful that you may hear from the paper industry about paper bags, I agree, they're a better alternative, but we don't want to switch one to one. So that's really critically important to us, and I just want to, again, lend my support to the city for your work and offer myself as a resource as you move through this policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jocelyn.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Thanks so much for providing this opportunity. I also am here in support of the bag ban, looking forward to returning for the public hearing. Oh, I live in southeast Salem, so this is my first time speaking at a city council meeting here in Salem, and I'm happy to be here.
Great, good job.
So anyways, thanks, and I also am here in support of being with our folks who are going through all of the really challenging times during all this immigration policy. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. That's the, everyone who signed up. Is there anyone who didn't that wanted to speak? Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo.
I'm wondering if we could take a five-minute break either now or after Item 4. Your, Item 4, I think, is going to be the postponed public hearing, so we could go ahead and do that and get rid of that, and then I'd ask a break.
I actually had the thought that we could just pull up this measure and get a vote on this thing so folks can go home if they want to.
That would be good, but could I have a two-minute break then? I want to talk about something with the city attorney.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
We'll take a two-minute break. I'm going to ask unanimous consent from the council to move forward 3.3C to this point on the agenda.
Okay. Second.
Well, let's just say it's unanimous, and we'll just go ahead. How's that? Okay? All righty. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council approve the legislative position recommended by the individual members of the council legislative committee on ballot Measure 102, 103, 104, and 105.
Second by Kizer.
And if I could make another amendment to that motion, or continuation of the motion, I also move that we, the council, direct the mayor to sign the appropriate ballot measure support, ballot measure positions that could go on the voter's pamphlet.
Okay.
Well, here's what it means. Well, let me, I'll speak to it and then we can say.
You go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of things. Counselor McCoy asked what that actually meant, and there's, what it means is there's a ballot measure, the voter's pamphlet will come out, it'll have the ballot measure, there will be people who, entities that will be putting positions out both in favor and opposed to any particular ballot measure on the ballot. And those that are consistent with the city's position as we adopt tonight may well want to say the city of Salem City Council supports this, our position, either supports it in favor of the ballot measure or supports it against the ballot measure, depending on the position. And the city can do that without any cost to the city. The cost is to the entity that puts the advertisement, I guess you would call it, on the ballot measures. So that's what that means. Now, if I may speak to the motions themselves. I particularly would like to speak to ballot Measure 105, and I have to tell you, fellow counselors, in this motion, just as in the inclusive city motion and the against the zero tolerance policy on the border motions, which I made at the time, I find that in each instance, the folks who testified tonight here are much more eloquent and persuasive and powerful than I could be. It's moving to hear the testimony by both people who are directly affected by this measure and people who are indirectly protected, and I specifically, well, I cite all the people who testified, but Ms. Cryer and Mr. Chrisel, and then also Alonso, I'm sorry, I cannot remember your last name, but every single other person who spoke tonight spoke directly and spoke from the heart and gave real, practical reasons why it's important for us as a city council to take a stand on this issue. And I know in the past, on some of the other issues, specifically the border policy issue, there was some discussion that this is something that doesn't affect the people of Salem, so why should we be voting on it? Well, this one, ballot Measure 105 dramatically affects the people of Salem, and we should oppose it, and that's consistent with our declaration that we are an inclusive city and our declaration that we are against the zero tolerance and other anti-immigration policies on the border. So I urge that we support this motion as to 105 and as to the other three motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I want to clarify, one thing is on your suggestion on signing, the way that'll appear is it'll be Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem. So that's how, right now, I'd be the person signing, so.
I would say that's fine, and I also know that there have been some individual counselors who have also
Who are doing the same.
Done the same.
And there's opportunity, but, boy, the opportunities are running out tonight.
Yes.
Tonight and tomorrow. So if you'd like to sign on, be sure to touch bases with folks with these campaigns. Yeah, okay? A discussion? Counselor Kizer.
Thanks. I just wanted to add on, thank you very much for everybody who came to testify. It can be very intimidating to come to this body and give your comments, and I really do thank you, everyone who spoke. It's a big deal, and you're really putting yourself out there. Not only is Measure 105 taking away our local control, it's just, it's immoral, and I can't support things that are immoral, especially in times like this. So I'm really happy that the council So, I'm really happy that the council is taking a stance and the city of Salem will take a stance.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was unable to attend the legislative committee meeting when that came up, and I'm sorry I missed that one. In regards to the items, there's four items. There's more measures than that that will be on the ballot. To my knowledge, we have never taken a position on a ballot measure. I mean, we are a republic, so we're representing the voters at the city council level. This is something that is going to all voters. So, I support some. I oppose some of the positions on different ones. There's ones that aren't even here, and we've never done this before. It's like, why don't we endorse some candidates?
You got someone in mind?
No. And it's not our place, because that is also up to the voter. So, I will be voting in opposition to the entirety of the motion on the floor.
Counselor, as one of the two counselors that was at the legislative meeting, what Counselor Anderson and I did was look at these measures for their impact on the city of Salem and directly on the taxpayers as well as the residents of the community. So, we took a look at it in that way and its impact on our policies, including our policy that has been recommended and been in place for 20 years, recommended by the chief most recently. So, I certainly understand your concern. I do, and I respect it completely, but I want you to know that there is another point of view on this.
If I can just follow?
Sure.
Because the other ones are similar. It's like, there's people in town that believe we should never tax groceries, and there's people who think we should leave that option open as well. Not to address any one of the specific ballot measures, but that's why they are ballot measures, and they're destined to go out to all voters. If city counselors want to add their name as supporter opposed versus us as a body representing the entirety of the city of Salem, which I don't think we'll vote unanimously on any of the items that will be before the electorate.
And we won't vote unanimously tonight, so we'll move on forward. Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to vote yes for these. I support all of the positions of state. I specifically want to speak to 105. I was an intern in the state senate, the session that this was passed in 1987, when I was a senior at Willamette. And then I started my law enforcement career the next year. So, I've worked my entire professional life under this law, and I've seen, I've seen the impact of all of the issues that we heard about tonight firsthand. And we need to oppose 105 with all of the strength of our voices. And I understand Counselor Nanki's position, I do. But I think as leaders in this community, we have to take a stand, and we have to say what we believe is right. And I strongly urge us to oppose Measure 105. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I am, I'm not going to be able to support the motion. I don't believe this agenda, I didn't should even be on the council's table tonight. I think Counselor Nanki spoke to that well. For me personally, I have not made up my mind about some of these ballot measures, including 105. I heard just on the way here tonight that there's a letter signed by 18 county sheriffs in the state of Oregon that are in favor of it. So, I believe the impression that we have got here tonight is incomplete. And I don't know why people who favor this, especially 105, aren't here to speak to it. But I, I believe that there's a difference in ballot measures, and they are for the people to the side, not the government. And I don't think that the city council should be involved with this. And so, I'll be voting no on the package. And I'm not stating any opinion on any of the ballot measures.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
Going along with this theme, you know, I'll start with this. I'm absolutely opposed personally to 105. I'll vote no on 105. I'll probably contribute money to the campaign to defeat 105. That being said, I don't think it's appropriate for this body to be taking these kinds of political positions. These are nonpartisan positions. These aren't Democratic and Republican positions. They're nonpartisan positions because we're here to represent all the citizens in our ward. And when you start taking political positions as a city council, in effect, you're starting to lobby people for one position or the other. I don't think that's what we're here to do. We're here to work and run the city. This is setting a bad precedent, and I think we've done enough of this, and we need to start slowing down the, what we're doing here. So, I will be reluctantly voting no, but again, it's not because I'm in favor of passage of 105. I'm clearly opposed to it.
Okay. Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question, I guess, of staff. As my understanding, I've been on the council for a year and a half, my understanding is that the city has taken positions before on legislative items. Is that, is that true, or am I just totally off-base?
That's why we have a legislative committee.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to, for the record
Hence the title, legislative committee.
For the record, point out that the city council has taken positions on ballot measures, legislative initiatives before. So, this is not a new thing. I think it's really important that the public understands this is not a new thing. We've done this before.
Do I have ballot measures?
I'd like clarification on statewide ballot measures, if that's true.
Well, perhaps with people who've been with the organization longer than I have. In my three years, I don't recall a city council taking a position on a ballot measure. A city council, through its legislative committee, will take positions on legislative issues, legislative priorities, both Salem's as well as the League of Oregon cities. In my seven years of experience with the legislative committee, would be the same as was stated by the city manager.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
And in my four years on the legislative committee, we looked at these bill, or any proposed bill, and we looked at it, would it affect the city's operations? Would it, and would it affect it positively or negatively? And if it was a positive, yes, we'd deal with it. If it was negative, we wouldn't. But if it didn't affect it at all, we passed on it. We didn't have a position on it. We just let it go.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I think that makes my point exactly. This ballot measure and all these ballot measures would affect the people of Salem, which is why we ought to take a position on it. Secondly, I suppose you could say this is a political decision, but it's a, it's a nonpartisan position. We're nonpartisan council members. The particular ballot measures are not Democratic Party ballot measures or Republican Party ballot measures. They are, again, are advanced without any sponsorship originally by either party. So, it seems to me that this is the type of nonpartisan position that a nonpartisan council, whose city is going to be affected by these ballot measures, should take a position.
Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Measure 105 will have a huge impact on every department in the city, especially the police department. It'll have a huge impact on the county jail and our ability to hold people accountable who need to be held accountable. And it will not, it will impact every person who is an immigrant to this community or may not look like all of us sitting here, and their ability to engage with the city and engage with law enforcement. And I, there is nothing that's bigger than that. So, we, it absolutely will impact us.
Counselor Lewis.
You know, the comments I've heard just from the last two counselors and the one that I heard from several of the testimony, that passage of 105 will cause racially profiling. I believe that's an insult, insult to the city of Salem's police department. I don't believe that they're going to. If you think that they are going to all of a sudden become racially profiling people because this law, this may pass, that's an insult to the integrity of the police department who has worked for years, years, to work with this community. I appreciate the fear that a lot of people have, but to say that we will be in a racially profiling situation required, this, this passage of this does not require that.
Yes, Counselor Hoyt.
I would just like to say, as a 30-year professional of law enforcement, sworn law enforcement professional in this state, I completely disagree with what my colleague just said.
Okay. I'm going to ask you again. I know you all feel real strongly. That really doesn't help. That really doesn't help. It just makes you feel good.
I have to, I have to ask the, Counselor Hoyt, if, are you now feeling as though that this passage of this measure would force you to act differently in your job?
Okay. I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question. Go ahead, Counselor Cook.
I just, I appreciate the debate on the floor with this, but I would request that we move for a decision. And I would just want to add that these are truly strange times. And although we have never, to the knowledge, institutional knowledge of this body, taken stances or certain measures, I agree with Counselor Kizer that at some point, these decisions are not political. They become obligatory. They become an obligation of someone that's a member and representative of my community to not politicize, but to stand with people and to be unified. We're linking arms, and we're together.
Hold the question.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay. Louis, Nanki, McCoy. Motion passes. Okay, we are back to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Hoyt.
Do I have to mention that was pulled?
Go ahead.
And 3.3C has been pulled off the consent calendar.
It's been dealt with.
Yeah, it's dealt with.
Okay, it's all right.
So, want me to go through it?
I'll wait just a second. We're getting you some money. We've got another half an hour before I get here. If you, I actually have a clock up here. Okay, let's move on then. We have a motion on the consent calendar.
Sure, we do. And on the consent calendar, the minutes of the August 13th city council meeting, under action items, we're authorizing the city manager to execute an IGA between the U.S. Department of Justice, Drug Enforcement Administration, and the city of Salem for the operation of a narcotics task force in fiscal years 18 and 19. We're authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and the disposition of surplus real property at 3619 Pringle Road Southeast. And that's it?
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. Motion passes. Public hearing. I'm going to open the, oop, go ahead. Jen Haviness. I'm going to open the public hearing. Counselor Nanki.
Yes, as requested by the parties, I move to continue the hearing until September 24th, and that council wait until that date to accept oral testimony.
Second.
Second by Louis. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We have no special orders of business, so we will go to information reports.
They were informative.
They were informative. I do want to pull up 6E just to kind of find out what, this is the ice skating rink this year. I'm real interested in that. I'd like to know what's going on there for the public to hear when that starts and what's going on.
Well, what's going on is, based upon last winter's very successful Salem on Ice, the operator wants to continue under the current agreement and operate the ice rink again this coming winter. And perhaps Robert Chandler can provide more specifics on that.
Yes, Robert Chandler, Assistant Public Works Director. And that's exactly what the city manager said. We're building on the success of last year's inaugural Salem on Ice. Just a few minor changes. We've extended the period so that it will end about a week later to overlap with the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday.
Say that again.
Oh, sure. It is essentially the same agreement we had last year with the Salem on Ice, except we've added, it's a little bit longer. This year's, this coming year's season, 2018-19, will now end after the Martin Luther King Jr. weekend.
When will it start?
Before Thanksgiving.
No later than November 15.
No later than?
No later than.
So, they could start earlier?
A little bit earlier.
Excellent.
It's, and, you know, the start time, there's a period where he, the operator gets everything set up, and then just wait for the ice to freeze. And then he will operate through Martin Luther King Jr. I can't believe I'm saying this.
Is that like water, watching water boil?
Well, not in this field, but then, when he finishes, then you wait for the ice to melt, and then he takes it down.
Ah, okay.
So, that's, that's why there's a no later than and no earlier than.
You don't have a chart.
Same location?
Same location.
Okay. Counselor Cook.
Do you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Acting Director Chandler, sorry. Do you know if the Salem on Ice has asked for a permit for hard liquor sales at this event?
I do not know.
Okay. And will there be a timeframe on that? Do they have to submit before a certain time if they're intended to sell hard liquor at this particular location?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Will they be able to sell it for the duration? Do they have to submit it within 30 days before opening? Can they submit, once they're already open, to do a partial run during a certain amount of time for these temporary permits? Because this is a longer event and not something like Brew Fest, I'm just curious just to see where this new...
To my knowledge, the applying to the permit to serve liquor is like everything else. There's a start time and a stop time, and you can apply even while the rest is set up, or you can apply beforehand, and an ending time. They're like, almost like separate permits to some degree.
Okay.
And I do not know his intentions on hard liquor.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're all singing.
Actually, I was going to take this opportunity to throw out a little challenge to Mayor Bennett. I haven't been on ice skates for 45 years, but I'm willing to try as long as I can use one of those white walkers
Walkers.
And a helmet. But the challenge is, if I do it, you have to.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if that'll be happening. I'm going to be 70 years old next week, and I'd like to live to 71. It's like that 41st anniversary. I'm really working hard to extend both my lifespan and the quality of my life, and I didn't find that worked out for me. Yeah.
Just, just
I think she, I think that'd come to an end too if I hop on that ice.
A tip for both of my colleagues, they do sell double-bladed ice skates.
That's nice.
And they're
Thank you.
They're double-bladed on the side.
That's good. I wouldn't walk on that ice this year. I'm not going to take a chance. But I'll watch you. I'll hold your, I'll hold your coat. Anything else? Okay?
Actually
Yes.
I did want to make one comment on Agenda Item 6B. And I know that we'll be talking about this at a future date, but I have, I've been waiting for this opportunity. After 10 years on the planning commission and now almost four complete years on the city council, one of the things that has been absolutely consistent since that first year was that, and it's just a coincidence possibly, but it seems that those that are in favor of something get their information into you early. Those that are opposed to something, just coincidentally, it always comes at the last hour, multiple pages. And as a slow reader who's supposed to read and comprehend everything before the meeting, I think 3:30 is even a little bit too, too late, and I would like to see us cut it off at noon, especially with the advance of technology these days. If somebody wants to communicate, they have the opportunity to do that. And for the sake of making good decisions, I'd like to have the time to review.
I'm going to let the city attorney respond to that one.
Well, I am sure the city recorder would love that change. The problem is with land use applications, which is when you get most of those real late submissions. I wish Mark Shipman was here.
late submissions, I wish Mark Shipman was here, so we could call him out on that. But the clock's off, so I guess he went home.
Uh-oh.
So, anyway, I apologize, I digress. For quasi judicial land use hearings, the appeal hearings, they can submit up to the close of the hearing, there's nothing we can do about it. We can continue the hearing to give you another two weeks to read it, but that's it.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment on Number 6C, which is the police station planning documents. I went through the agenda before I read it, before I read the actual items, and what I wrote on 6C is "Path along Mill Creek?", question mark, and then I looked at it, and I see there is a path along Mill Creek, so I want to say congratulations to the chief and everybody else who's been working on this, as well as the city staff, because I think that's a crucial thing in terms of transparency and openness, and I understand there'll be offense there, there will be separation between the secured police facilities and the creek itself, but I think at some point, I've been very interested in what we can do to develop Mill Creek from really out by the State Department of Transportation all the way down as far as we can go, and I think this is a very good step in that direction, and I think it'll be very helpful, so thank you, Chief Moore, and everybody else who worked on this to make sure there is that kind of path there along the Mill Creek, so thanks.
Very good. Counselor Kizer?
Thank you, I just wanted to speak quickly to 6A, this is the library collection development policy. I'm really happy this is happening, I was surprised to learn that we didn't have a collection development policy, even though it sounds like city staff have been following kind of the guidelines set forth by other cities and...
There's your skating partner, right there.
Well, I could find a good lawyer, maybe I...
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
That was graceful, actually.
Go ahead.
So anyways, I'm really happy we're getting a collection development policy, so whoever, whoever kind of spearheaded that, I'm guessing it's the new library director. Good, good move, yes, thank you. I worked for a while with museums, archives, and libraries, and that was always the first thing we said, is what's your collection policy? And it goes the same for libraries, so it's great, thanks.
Okay, very good. Okay, ready? We'll go to first readings. Whoa. Oh, boy. Don't run with them.
Ordinance Bill 20-18, an ordinance relating to single-use plastic bags, creating SRC Chapter 48.
Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, I move we conduct a public hearing on September 12th of 2018 regarding Ordinance Bill Number 20...
10, 10th, Counsel.
10, excuse me, regarding Ordinance Bill 20-18, which restricts, restricts the use of single plastic bags.
Do you want to speak to your margin?
Not really, I mean, it's been spoken to already by people over here, we spoke to it back in May when I originally proposed it, so we're having a public hearing, we're going to have some reaction to that, and I am pretty certain that there may be some changes made to the bill as we move forward, so we're just getting the ball rolling here.
Right. Counselor Cook?
I would like to ask for a friendly substitute motion, I believe would be the right term, I ask for some assistance with this, and I'd like to speak with it further, but I would move that staff examine disposal of plastic bags in a more comprehensive waste management and environmental action plan, and that that plan be included for an item of consideration as the, as a policy agenda item for 2019.
Second by McCoy.
So, do I speak?
Yeah, you, you go ahead.
Okay, so, part of the reason that, that I feel like this would be a different approach to do this, is a lot of people in my ward reached out to me about this, and a lot of people really agree that plastic ban should be bagged, or plastic bags should be banned, excuse me. A lot of people have concerns about the environment, concerns specifically about our water quality, but these things don't happen in a vacuum, and I sat down with someone in my ward who said, you know, "We just got done with the alcohol bloom, we just had our garbage rates increase, we just had, I just was told that all of the stuff that I've been recycling, I can't recycle anymore," and so to have this policy come out in and of itself, and by itself, isolated, I don't believe would have a big enough impact on the environment. I agree with Surf Rider and with all of the people that testified, this is a serious issue, I am not trying to mitigate plastic bags. I'm the only one, I believe, out of this body that's had to bag, that's worked at a grocery store, that my independent grocer did not have plastic bags on site, so I got it, but when we're looking, when we talk about plastic bags, even though there's, they're unique of themselves, we're really talking about our waste, we're talking about our waste in the community, so in the same way that when garbage rates increased, and when we talked about air pollution and the incinerator and in this region, they're all connected, and we are moving towards this policy agenda that we all agreed on, the goal being that we can't, we can be responsive to community needs, but that we move forward based on the agenda that we've set for the year, so that staff can dedicate time on it. Well, fall is the time that we set those agendas, and it is well past time that we have a comprehensive waste strategy and waste management plan. We don't have that, and, you know, we talked about during the hearing or during the testimony, Salem's not first if we were to do this plastic bag ban, lots of other cities have done this. If we're not gonna be first, we should do it really, really well, we should do it so that the people that are already feeling, whether the word is marginalized, whether the word is stressed, people that do want to do the right thing, we need to make it easier for those people to do the right thing. And while I understand the testimony of fees being the right way to motivate behavior, I do think that we need to take a comprehensive approach so that it doesn't feel purely punitive. I hope that makes sense, and it's within the best spirit that I make that substitute amendment, but I welcome discussion.
Counselor Nanki?
Can you rephrase the substitute motion?
So...
Or reiterate? Or say it again?
I move that staff examine the disposal of plastic bags or the plastic bag ban in a more comprehensive waste management and environmental action plan, and that that plan be included for consideration for the 2019 policy agenda, so that we don't make, sorry, end of motion, so that we don't make this one motion tonight, feel great about it, and then everything continues on for the rest of the community. This would be substantive holistic change for how we handle our waste in Salem, so that we're not polluting our oceans or our rivers, and so that we're being more comprehensive.
Just a quick follow, and we have an environmental action plan, and do we have solid waste management as a component of said plan?
Well, I have the result areas from our study here.
So, what I can say that what was discussed during the formation of the 2018 Council Policy Agenda session was the establishment of a greenhouse gas emission baseline, and so that's the effort that is being undertaken this year as part of the agenda. I, I believe there was some discussion, obviously it's the council's direction in moving forward into next year, but that being step one of something that would lead to whatever may look like an environmental action plan.
Counselor Anderson? Okay, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I guess I'm still formulating, so go ahead.
One of you go.
I'm never shy about going.
There we go. What you got?
I don't disagree at all, Counselor Cook, with the intent behind your motion, that this plastic bag ban is one of a whole large overall policy that we should be looking at for environmental sustainability, more efficient use of our resources, more protection of the environment, but I would say that in order to do that, you've got to start someplace, and this to me is a place to start, just as the, what Deputy City Manager Duncan discussed with in terms of the greenhouse gas, and I would say that at least it was the sense of the council that we need to go further than just the greenhouse gas, and that in effect, we are looking at the broader picture, and I would suggest, with all respect, I'm gonna vote against the motion, but I would love to see you make that separate motion after we vote on this motion, and I would vote for it.
Counselor Cook?
So, if I may respond, thank you, Counselor Anderson, and as you know, I mean, this is, this is tricky for me, because when you originally made the proposal in March, I think most of the people in my community thought there would be much more discussion and much more of a open process, but it feels like for people in my ward, the people that are already using reusable bags, this can't come soon enough, but everybody is on the same page that it's not enough, that we're looking at utensils, we're looking at straws, we're looking at lids, we're looking at cigarette butts, which is one of the number-one sources of pollution in our oceans, we're looking at, you know, how the plastic bags affect the recycling at Garden, all of these factors, and so one isolated motion feels like it's, it's not accomplishing what we would want it to accomplish, and also that as much as people say, "Well, we don't have the time, where's the time?" If we don't put the staff effort in behind it, we can pass anything that we want to feel good about, but if it doesn't have the teeth behind it to make it work, we're gonna have to be revisiting it and revisiting it over and over again. So I really do want this to succeed and go forward. I do welcome this part of the discussion with it, I'm, I feel like it's just bigger than bags, and people are frustrated. If this wouldn't have come after, you know, the green sword came down, where we can't recycle anything, I had someone who I was talking with that's like, "No, I can't even recycle this," because she had been putting the bags in the, in the blue basques to begin with. Right, oops, but I would remind you, the, the number-one contaminant when they came through to talk with us wasn't necessarily plastic bags, it was diapers. We have a lot of education to do in our community about our waste and our waste streams, and you're right, Counselor Anderson, we have to start somewhere, but I would caution that where we start, if it's punitive and non-comprehensive, can waste a lot of capital that we have in our community. I think people are willing to stand with us and do the right thing.
Counselor Kizer?
Thank you. I, I agree with your sentiments, Counselor Cook, about, you know, wanting to look at this comprehensively. I see this a lot actually in my work with project management, is you want to do something because you want to combat, you know, the problem, knowing that the root cause is still out there, and maybe you're not quite getting at that. There are times when you need to just kind of do the thing that's gonna fix the immediate problem, and there are times when you need to explore that deeper root cause. At this point, I think we're at the, the time where, where there's, there's appetite to kind of fix the immediate problem, notwithstanding the root cause. I think we do have our Environmental Action Working Group that's, that's moving forward, as Casey was saying, so I think there's opportunity to bring in what you're saying into that, to form policy and to take a comprehensive look, or a more comprehensive look. I don't think that that is the right, I don't think now's the right time, though, to do that, so personally, I'd like to move ahead with the plastic bag ban hearing for that specifically, but knowing that we're kind of moving in that direction, so, but I don't want things to expand beyond and get bigger, because there's always the risk, if you don't do the immediate thing, that you'll never do the immediate thing because you're stuck on this big thing, so. So I support what you're saying, but I, I'm not gonna support the motion.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said on this so far, but I don't think these are mutually exclusive, I think we can do them both, I think we can accomplish everything that you're talking about, Counselor Cook, and still achieve a short, a shorter-term, really big win, which is to ban the plastic bags, and I think we ought to do that, and then proceed further with a bigger policy agenda, so...
So you're asking for an additional motion?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think it should be a substitute, in my way of looking at it, this should, there should be two separate motions, I don't, it's, I don't see the substitute motion as really being a replacement for the original motion, I think we ought to do them both.
Counselor McCoy?
I agree with Counselor Cook. This whole thing with the plastic bags, A, is it seems to me like, well, it's a short term, look what we did for our, a little ferret victory, it really doesn't deal with the issue. It's a single, one-off kind of a, an issue you're dealing with, and we got a bigger problem plastics than plastic bags, and I think attaching it as a whole comprehensive kind of a plan and moving forward is a much better approach than this one-off thing. So I would support the motion.
I will support.
Well, what we're, just a thought, what we're voting on tonight is setting a public hearing, first reading, there will be...
She's gonna set two motions, there's no public hearing.
No public, you're putting an end to the public hearing, too. Okay, okay. You guys ready to vote? Well... Louis?
Yeah, a couple of things now that I remembered, first of all, the grocery business, 1968 to 1969, and I hated it. Secondly, I agree that these, these two issues are completely separate, and that we are, what, a couple of weeks away from the public hearing, which usually ends up with a decision, and we can accomplish something in the next few weeks, that if we are to go back to square one and try and open this up to be more comprehensive, it's not gonna be done in a few weeks, and so I will vote against the substitute motion.
Counselor Cook?
So, am I able to make it instead of a substitute motion, an additional motion?
Why don't you withdraw your substitute motion, and then let's talk about it just for a second.
I'll withdraw.
Let's think this one through, okay. Second, who's the second?
McCoy.
McCoy, do you have any problem with it?
No.
Okay, okay. The thought is, we're gonna go to a public hearing if this passes on the 24th, and you have the opportunity to amend it, which would be to maybe add some direction moving forward, in other words, plastic bags, and oh, by the way, there'll be an amendment that says we'd like to have this included in our strategic planning process, could be added to that motion, where you get, kind of you get both, we're sort of chewing gum and walking at the same time.
And it's not...
Does that make sense?
Well, I want to clarify, because in working through this with staff, this is not going to leave it out from the policy?
Well, you could pull it in, you'll pull it in if you can get your amendment passed at the next meeting, you've laid it on the table, I think everyone's aware of what you're talking about, and I think you're finding broad agreement, but you would do it in conjunction with passing a plastic bag ban as part of that public hearing, and it may draw in people who are gonna be like we are in our family, really fed up with Styrofoam, really fed up with really overpacking grocery items, and, and no place to get rid of it. I mean, we used to figure we're gonna go the little tiny thing, we're getting a bigger and bigger garbage can because of what's happening, so I, I hear what you're talking about, but I think we could do it both at the public hearing and subsequent amendment. I think you could put something together, and I'd suggest working with Counselor Anderson and look, and, and others who are supportive, looking for that language.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the, of the original motion, okay, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
One, Nay, Nanki. Motion passes. Okay, let's go to the second reading.
Ordinance Bill 17-18, an ordinance vacating aviation loop southeast. Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, next one. Okay, next one.
Engrossed Ordinance Bill 15-18, an ordinance relating to erosion prevention and control, clearing and grating of land, sidewalks, land divisions, planned unit developments, land use procedures, and flood plains. Amending SRC 75.020, 7.5, 75.050, 78.180, 82.030, 205.035, 205.055, 210.030, 300.850, 601.005, 601.030, and 601.045, and creating SRC 205.800.
I move staff recommendation.
It's, there's a, we had to engross the ordinance to add findings, so...
Okay, sorry.
Second.
Hoy seconded. What'd you do, McCoy? Did you send in gross the ordinance?
I said, "Staff recommendation is engross Ordinance Bill Number 1518 and conduct a second reading, which meant Salem revised code."
There we go.
Right on.
Okay, let's vote.
Counselor Lewis?
Oh, I do get to go first. Well, let me take this moment. Aye.
Counselor Kaser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, that's it. Unless there's some public, nope, we're adjourned.